All right, it was well born when you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Present.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up will be our opening prayer. I'd like to invite Commissioner Alicia Sanderson to lead us in our opening prayer, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us gather here this evening and for the beautiful day that we've had and this gorgeous place that we get to call home. Please guide us as we move forward with the town's business, representing all of our people fairly. Thank you for our blessings, Father. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and face our flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number five tonight would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
They move.
Commissioner Sanderson moves to adopt. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Next up would be a public comment. If you signed up by the door, you'll be called up in the order you signed up. Invite you to the podium to give you three minutes and we'll start with our first speaker.
No public comments.
All right, did we miss anybody? Did anybody miss the sheet? All right, perfect. Uh, item number seven, we will invite Mr. Matt Zap. We have some employee introductions or recognitions. Mr. Zap, when you're ready.
Powerpoint.
Okay, great.
So our first new employee is joining us in Public Works. We want to welcome Joe McGee, who is filling a permanent vacancy that was recently opened and we're welcoming Joe. We also have with us tonight, if he's willing to step out there, he's in the corner running the camera. There is our media intern Garrett Moore. We want to welcome Garrett. He is a student currently at Appalachian State and is back from the Westerly side of the state to spend the summer with us and we're glad to have Garrett here. And I'll let Chief take over for all the police department.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and introduce and officially welcome our newest full-time officer Samantha Benson. Samantha came to Emerald Isle part-time in October of 2023 and was recently offered and accepted a full-time position to fill a vacant, uh, full-time beach patrol spot. Samantha graduated BLET from Coastal Community College in two, in May of 2003. She holds an Associate Arts Bachelor's of Psychology with a minor in Intellectual Development Disability and Applied Behavioral Analysis. That's a mouthful. And recently became a licensed practical nurse. Officer Benson aspires to climb through the ladder throughout her time in her career. She looks forward to continuing to learn and experience all the challenges that come her way in the career field of law enforcement. Officer Benson will be nothing short of an asset to the town of Emerald Isle and to the Emerald Isle Police Department. We are lucky to have her join our team, Miss Samantha Benson. At this time, I would like to recognize Officer Samuel Charles Scott for achieving his advanced law enforcement certificate from the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission. You have heard me speak before and say that this is a professional certificate that is achieved by using a formula set forth by the commission. The formula compilation includes education, training, and experience. Again, I will echo what I find most notable and impressive is the individual's drive to seek these hundred hours of training, giving them the knowledge to be more versed, prepared, and better to serve our great town. Please join me in congratulating Officer Sam Scott on this achievement. Sam. Sam. So a letter from the Director Smythe in your pen.
All right, congratulations, everyone. Welcome to all our new employees. Officer Scott, congratulations and well-earned. Congratulations to you. It's a great achievement. We'll leave Chief Panzarella off at the podium for some police department updates next.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if we could pull up the presentation titled Traffic Enforcement Efforts. This is in response to recent complaints we've had along Deerhorn Drive and the Coast Guard Road Corridor. First, I wanted to just share with you, driving forces for increased enforcement include increased crashes, citizen complaints, and the high probability of locating violators. And this is straight out of the Radar Operator Manual that's used by the North Carolina Justice Academy. So what we did following the May 16th board meeting, we conducted a covert radar operation from May 16th to May 25th, 23rd. Sorry, I can't read my PowerPoint there. In both directions, the median speed was 22.3 miles per hour. We captured 1,810 total vehicles and identified only seven of those traveled over 34 miles per hour, which left us less than 1% of enforceable violations. We also noted that along that corridor, we issued 32 state citations from May 16th to June 6th in the Deerhorn Drive Coast Guard Road Corridor. We will still continue to focus as we receive complaints in various areas. But this is the results of that operation from the complaint on Deerhorn Drive. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the board for Chief Panzarella?
Chief, was that on Deerhorn and the other backroads in that same subdivision area?
I only have one covert radar and I can only do one street going both directions. So it was located on Deerhorn.
On Deerhorn, okay.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Do you have any other plans, any other locations where it's going to be set up, just so I know?
Follow the posted speed limit. So there was additional slides in that presentation. I just wanted to share with you the Memorial Day weekend. I know that I provided those stats to the manager and he forwarded them out to you all, but we saw a very busy Memorial Day weekend, 2024. Our officers answered 234 calls for service. They made 87 traffic stops. They issued 47 state citations. We issued 27 civil or town ordinance violations, four arrests. We conducted three motor vehicle thefts, eight motor vehicle crashes, and one death investigation. You all may have also seen an increased amount of cars parking along Emerald Drive around the East Ocean Regional Access. I am in conversation with DOT to see what we can do about helping out with that parking situation.
Thank you, Chief. Fantastic job by you and everyone in the department. I'm very, very proud and appreciative of all of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, is that, um, that sign at Bogeyla Drive helping with the people trying to wait for parking space on Emerald Drive?
It is, it seems to be. I believe it did help this weekend and it kind of helps us, prevents us from putting an officer out there. That's a dangerous intersection. Folks often wonder why we don't do it on Coast Guard Road when traffic gets backed up, simply because it's better to let the lights run the traffic and there'd be a little bit of delay. But right there, we saw an increased backup even as far as the roundabout. So we, we were kind of forced, our hands were tied to put an officer out there to keep that traffic moving.
And Chief, thank you. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board, but we appreciate the work that you and your officers do to protect our citizens and keep our town safe and, and our tourists safe also. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I would alter them. They're what allows me to go home at night and lay my head down and sleep comfortably. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Chief. Next up, we have Chief Billy Mathias with the Fire Department for Fire EMS and Ocean Rescue update. Good evening, Chief.
Evening, everybody. We have the presentation. There we go. We'll try to keep mine shorter than Chief Panzarella. So just wanted to give a brief update on the Memorial Day weekend that we saw this past couple of weeks ago, actually. Started on May 24th, which is that Friday, and going through that Monday. Emerald Isle Fire and EMS responded to 37 total incidents over that four-day period. Just over 20 of those were EMS, medical emergency calls where we had a majority of those transported. So that's a two-hour round trip if we're just going to Carteret General, where we had units and employees off the island. Our incident types ranged from obviously water rescues, unfortunately, structured fire that took up a grand majority of Saturday morning with sound furniture, outside fires on the beach strand, vehicular accidents, gas leaks, and missing or found person. As far as our metrics on the beach strand, ooh, I should have made that larger. You might have to turn around this way. 707 public educations, that's guards on the beach strand actually stopping, warning people of dangerous situations, whether it be rip currents, surf conditions, as far as surf getting too big. Turn around again. 129 worn swimmers, four missing or found, and 121 problem surf conditions found with 11 people rescued out of the ocean during those four days. So there was nine water rescues over those four days. And so 11 of those were actually somebody pulled from the surf, checked out by Fire and EMS, or utilized our ocean rescue services. Told you, it's going to be short and sweet. So there we go. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Mathias?
Chief, again, I'd like to extend our gratitude. We're very grateful for the job that you and your staff do to protect, again, our town, our boundaries, keep our waters safe. We very, very appreciate the work.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chief, how's, how's the staff been looking for your lifeguard and stuff too? Are we at 100% or where are we at?
We are probably at 110%. We had some of our guards who we weren't anticipating coming back in a full-time role, which is like 40 hours a week. So we actually do have a little bit of a surplus and welcome them back with their years of knowledge to our beach strand and use them as we can. Other guards getting some time off and not really getting that sudden days out there.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you, Chief. Next up, we have Assistant Planner Greg Hayes with some planning. Oh, there's Seberg. It said Greg Hayes. That's not Greg. Sorry, Chris.
Sit down. Okay. All right. So we're going to go over real quickly the development activity through the Planning Inspections Department for the month of May. So there's a layout on the permits we've issued, zoning permits. We issued a total of 46. Point out that eight of them are either new single-family dwelling constructions or redevelopment. Redevelopment is when they tear down what was there and build something new. So we got tree permits. We've got permit fees collected for the month of May is just short of $6,400. Total project cost of what has been permitted for the month of May is 17 million. We did do site visits and what I've started doing with those reports on site visits is just break it down so you guys know what staff is looking at, code enforcement, cam site visits. Just still martyrs, uh, site visits and tree removal. Tree removal seems to be the biggest thing. So highlight some of the code enforcement efforts. You'll see on the screen, we've got a couple, well, we got quite a few active cases, 10301 Mangrove. We're pretty close to finalizing that. 7305 Ocean Drive, we're pretty close to finalizing that. 4206 Ocean Drive, we're still in the midst. I'm working on that. We just closed 117 Arthur this past week. 200 Craig will be closed very soon. 7906 Emerald Drive. We are working on getting that squared away too. And let's see. Some of those are in the works, so you know, you got some work done, doing vegetation without a permit. So we've sent out letters for that. So all these are just, we're sending out certifications, we're finding them, we're receiving complaints, we're acting on every complaint we've received. So as far as planning board activity, the planning board did meet on the 20th of May. And you'll see on the screen, you'll, you'll hear later on tonight, the recommendations for the sidewalk dining portion of the code. But they're also working on the forward requested satellite merchant regulation. So we're looking to readdress that at the June 24th meeting this month and I possibly have that for you in the July meeting. So I have unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Mr. Seberg?
I appreciate these reports. This, this is great hearing it from the department heads and the leaders of the departments firsthand. I, I, this, I think it's some value.
Nice job. Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Item number nine would be our public announcements.
Welcome to the June Public Service Announcements. The next police educating the public event is on June 18th, starting at 10:00 a.m. in the Town Board Room. Emerald Fest kicks off on June 20th at the Western Ocean Regional Access. This free summer music concert series happens on Thursday evenings, starting at 6:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. throughout the summer. Bring a lawn chair and a blanket, but no alcohol, please. For the lineup, go to the Town of Emerald Isle's website. There will be a blood drive happening on June 21st from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the community center. The next planning board meeting takes place on June 24th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Town Board Room. Come have coffee with a cop at the next Coffee with a Cop event on June 27th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the Town Board Room. No agenda or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the officers in your neighborhood. The next Neighborhood Watch Meeting is on July 2nd at 4:00 p.m. in the Town Board Room. The Town Administrative Offices and Community Center will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day. Junior Lifeguard Camp starts July 8th through July 11th. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is on July 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the Town Board Room.
All right, thank you very much for that. Moving right along to item number 10 would be the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I have a correction to item number B or letter B. The minutes from the May 20 budget workshop meeting line, page 17, line 51, reports it as a unanimous vote to dismiss the department heads. And I know I did not vote for that. I thought it was 3-2 was my recollection. I'll let others speak for themselves, but I know that I did not vote to dismiss the department heads.
Okay.
It might have been, Mark did a great job filling in, but he's no Jason. So there might have been a little confusion on that front, but.
Okay, so you're saying it was not a unanimous vote. I'll, the board discussed, was it a 4-1 vote, 3-2 vote? I'll let you guys help me out with that.
I voted to dismiss.
I voted to dismiss.
Not to dismiss.
Not to dismiss.
I voted to dismiss.
Okay, so amended, amended to a 3-2 vote to dismiss the department heads, is that correct? So is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as amended? Is that what we need to do? All right, Commissioner Sanderson has that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We noted. Thank you very much, sir. Item number 11 would be appointment of committee members of the Stormwater Committee. Councilor Few Wood, we spoke a little bit ahead of the meeting as far as vote, rules of procedure, all that. Can you hold our hands just a little bit and tell everybody what you told me so we're all on the same page and we do it the right way the first time, please?
As you all may recall, you've done this before, Rule 31 regarding appointments is not entirely clear. In the past, when appointments have been made, this board has voted to suspend Rule 31. Reason it's not clear is because it says that a majority of vote getters, a majority of the votes, the person getting the majority of the votes will win. Then it says the person getting the most votes. And those are two different things because you could have 2-1-1, or if you're going to require a majority, it's much more likely to get deadlock. Don't mean to be long-winded from looking at the spirit of this rule, which we proposed a rewrite for, but which has not been adopted by the board. Looks like the original author's intent was to do majority of vote getters. In other words, if there are three candidates and you get a 2-2-1, then the one falls out for the next vote and it's five voting for the two. It's a series of events. So that is, that, that would be my proposal. The new rule is written for your consideration in that manner because I think it's most consistent with the old rule. And you have three seats, so you need three distinct elections here for the central portion, the eastern portion, and the western portion of town. Because, so it'll be a little bit easier because you have three different elections.
Okay, so the proper next step would be to?
Entertain a motion to suspend Rule 31 of the rules of procedure and use the highest vote getter model and possible one-off election that I've described to conduct the election, if that's the board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the, the Rule 31 and we do the highest vote getter for the committee selection.
Right, Commissioner Brownlow has that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion is carried. Let's see here, so.
Do we use our sheet here and vote our, our name on the sheet or how do we do this?
Do we, there are different, not precincts, if you will, but segments of the town, segments of the county?
Yes, sir. The, the board had previously decided that Eastern, Western, and Central would all be different areas. And it appears from the map created by staff that there are three candidates in Western, four in Central, and one in Eastern.
Okay.
And if you look on your numbers in the back, or Matt, would you like to tell them where those?
So obviously there's no hard and fast rule of West, East, and Central. That's up to you as well. We've had nine individuals apply, one individual rescinded their application. Before you should have the names of the individuals that have applied and then it's a little bit hard to see and I apologize, but the numbers correspond with the yellow pins. So you can see that in the furthest west are candidates five and candidate six. And then it says candidate three. If you look really closely, the numbers are on those yellow pins. So if you want to determine which area you'd like to start with, and then you can go ahead and begin your question.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate William Farrington from the central area of town. I guess that would be Central as a committee member for the Stormwater Committee.
Okay, so Central, we have a William Farrington. Do we need a roll call vote for this or just a nomination?
Just a nomination and you need to find out now, Mr. Mayor, if there are any other nominations and then a roll call vote would be appropriate.
Okay, so we have William Farrington nominated by Commissioner Brownlow. Are there any other nominations for the Central seat? All right, the motion for, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Taylor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
William Farrington. Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, William Farrington unanimous for Central.
I make a motion to appoint George Moore as the Eastern Most applicant on our list.
All right, so we have a nomination of George Moore for Eastern. Was that the one that only had one?
Yes.
Okay, just so it's official, George Moore was nominated? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, George Moore is going to be appointed to the Eastern and we'll move on to Western.
I'd like to make a motion to abort Greg Olmstead. Did I correct Craig's name? Candidate number five.
Right, Commissioner Taylor has nominated Greg Olmstead. Are there any other nominations from the board for Western? Commissioner Taylor with the nomination?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Mr. Olmstead has been appointed to Western for the Stormwater Committee. All right, easy enough. All right, item number 12, we'll have Mr. Chris Seberg, our Planning Director, back up for Sidewalk Dining to review the UDO changes. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. We could get the presentation on the screen. There we go. So what's on the screen is, we went through and did this presentation on a couple of meetings with the planning board. So we're going to start off just the sidewalk dining in general. So the premise of that, DOT has given us three steps for this process. The first is to execute a sidewalk dining agreement. Step two is to develop the, develop and enforce regulations. And number three is to create a permitting process to that. To give a little refresher on that, the board, this board did at their April 9th meeting instruct staff to work with the planning board to get everything together. So on step two, this is just a cut and paste from the documentation provided by North Carolina Department of Transportation on criteria specifically for sidewalk dining. There's references to North Carolina General Statutes 160, 136-27. It's, there's permitting process set up and the town shall require operator to provide agreements or evidence of old harmless for not only the town, but also North Carolina Department of Transportation. And there's certainly requirements to ensure that all state codes are followed, ABC permitting and whatnot. So minimum criteria for the sidewalk dining, you've got, you know, just the tables and chairs, five feet unobstructed paved surface on the sidewalks. It can only be adjacent to right of ways with 45 mile per hour speed limits or less. And permit shall remain in place until canceled in writing by either party within 30 days of written notice. Our starting point was the city of Greenville. They have one for her uptown dining area. So we used that and molded it to what the town was looking for. In addition to this, this is strictly for sidewalks. We are not looking to permit sidewalk dining on our multi-use path. So as far as submission standards, very, very specific, you know, we need plans on it. We need certifications from, that all the permits are met. Look at parking. We're going to look at your set the capabilities. We're going to look at your seating requirements. Let's see. So conditions set on this, and this has been helped with North Carolina Department of Transportation molding. That, that red area is something that they required. But it's just limited to restaurants. So we're not looking at bars or anything to do. This is just restaurants can take advantage of this. One thing the DOT required is that no food trucks can operate within that sidewalk dining area. No tents are allowed. No additional signage on the sidewalk area. All furnishing must be removed from the sidewalk dining area each day by, and that's been changed from 1:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That seems more logical on our operations. No electrical extension cords may be used in the sidewalk dining area. The flooring aspect was taken out at the recommendation of North Carolina Department of Transportation with the exception of pavers. They do permit pavers. Let's see, no beverage car. Let's see, no beverage carts. Let's see. And yeah, I mean, the permit holder must comply with ADA standards for this portion of it. So finalizing, we reserve the right to enter into a sidewalk dining area at staff's discretion. And then, of course, the permit holder shall maintain that old harmless liability. And here's responsibilities of the permit holder. Shall keep the sidewalks area free of garbage, trash, refuse and other materials. Shall maintain sidewalk dining area in a clean and unusable state and must protect the right of way at all times from damage. Shall properly clean and remove for the safety of pedestrians and for environmental concerns, any food drink or other items spills. Shall, permit holder shall use and occupy the sidewalk dining area in a safe and reasonable manner. Permit holder shall maintain a sidewalk dining area in good, complete state of repair and condition. It is not transferable of a restaurant worth to sell. And someone wants to do the same thing, they would have to reapply. And then here's, here's a revocation process. You know, deliberately misrepresenting the materials provided to staff, violations of town code or county health codes, violations of law, operating sidewalk dining area in such a manner to create public nuisance, failure to maintain health, business or other permit license required by law. There's just the general enforcement requirement on that. To include the violation fee of fifty dollars and then, of course, the revocation of the permit issue. So these are the definitions to add to our portion of it. So that I'll point out the sidewalk dining area, this is where all this would be permissible. We've restricted it to an area along the right of way of North Carolina Highway fifty-eight from Emerald Drive, starting at the intersection of Emerald Plantation Road to the intersection of Lightbox Street. And for this board to act upon this proposal, we would need to ask for you to set a public hearing for the July twenty twenty-four meeting of this board. That's all I have unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Mr. Seberg from the board?
Chris, does the DAT allow temporary fencing of barriers to be put up?
So that was one of the things, in the original proposal, it did include the possibility of barriers and they requested that we take the barriers out after their review of the draft regulations.
My concern, and I saw it firsthand, was a child breaking loose from the parents and running toward the, toward Highway fifty-eight, you know, Emerald Drive. And I was just like, wow, don't want that to happen if we're allowing sidewalk dining.
Understood.
Is there any speed limit requirement where that's happening at on the public road that's next to, or is it?
So the only restrictions on speed limit is it cannot be in a right of way of a road that's more than forty-five minimum. Or maximum forty-five.
But that DOT just recommended that we?
Yeah, that's, that's from their requirements to permit a sidewalk dining agreement and, of course, the regulations and whatnot.
And maybe if we had, if we required something that they could put out while their operation and then roll it back up or forward it back up or remove it at the end of the business hours. I wonder if DOT would be okay with that since it's kind of a recommendation from them and not a requirement.
We can certainly present that, but it was in the original draft and they specifically asked for us to take that out.
Okay.
So that's, that's my hesitation on that.
Have you talked to folks that could apply for one of these permits, the businesses along that corridor and how this might or might not affect their business? Would it mess up anybody's business model, you know, where you serve people?
I've only talked to one business owner that started this process and his interest level on that. But yeah, no, I have not had a chance to talk to any other business owners.
Any other questions for Mr. Seberg?
In your eyes, Chris, that'll, it seems like this would benefit the restaurant owners tremendously. Is that as far as more seating ability and everything else is what we're looking at?
It is certainly a possibility as long as all the parameters are followed. You know, you've got certain septic issues based off of seating. You've got capacity issues. We've got to make sure, you know, part of the review process does include public safety staff to ensure that this does not create any concern that they would have on that. But this is also something that quite possibly could kind of lines things up in the future. Maybe we're thinking about twenty years in advance, seems to be a reasonable possibility.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you again, Chris.
Sure.
Um, reading the agenda sheet here, I'm a little bit confused. I know we need a motion to set a public hearing for the July meeting. Is that the only needed motion? But I see that the planning board in their May twenty of twenty-four meeting recommended approval of a motion to recommend the Board of Commissioners amend the listed section of the UDO. Do I need that motion plus the motion for a public hearing or just a motion for the public hearing in July? Okay, okay, all right, so.
That was, that was just providing the planning board's motion, the two motions that are option for this board is if you guys are comfortable with the content, set the public hearing for the July meeting. If you guys want to send it back to the planning board for another look, that's your second potential motion and then.
I just want to make sure I wasn't missing one there.
Yes, sir.
Um, so if we don't have any grievances with the amendments, then I'll ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the July twenty twenty-fourth meeting.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the July twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has that motion all in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion is carried. Chris, thank you again for all the information and your work, sir. All right, item number thirteen will be our fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget. Mr. Zap and Finance Director Laura Rochford.
Good evening. We're going to go ahead and if staff can go put the PowerPoint presentation, of course. So for those of you that were fortunate enough to be here in May, this is your sequel. We would like to start with the presentation and go over all the details because there's fourteen million reasons we would like to be accurate in what we do. And Laura and I would like to present tonight the adapted draft and recommended budget to the board, the public and the community that is with us both here in person and online. Working with the town board, the mayor and all of our staff members, we have developed a draft budget that we anticipate meets the goals set by the Board of Commissioners at their January tenth and eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four goal-setting retreat. In addition, we had a special workshop meeting on May the twentieth. We have involved, adapted and included all of the changes as recommended and approved by the board in the new revised draft budget. The important news is we would like to maintain and approve upon the high standards in Emerald Isle, maintaining a sixteen point five cent tax rate, which is zero change from the previous year. We want to remind everyone that we had a CPI in the Southeast region this last twelve-month period of three point eight percent and our budget does reflect those changes. Again, we're proposing no tax increase and we are proposing a minor increase in the solid waste fee that would impact homeowners and property owners throughout Emerald Isle. The current fee is two hundred and ninety-five dollars. The proposed adjustment is three hundred dollars or five dollars per year or approximately forty-two cents per month per end user. The purpose of that fee change, that small five dollar change is for us to purchase and replace our knuckle boom truck. We have two trucks that drive throughout the community on a daily basis. Those trucks make approximately one hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty yard debris stops per day. And we traditionally have both trucks running five days a week upwards of fifty-plus weeks per year. We also have the recreational fee increases as approved by the board now on the revenue side of our budget. Overview at ten thousand feet, a continued enhancement to beach safety, which you saw tonight. And we want to thank Chief Mathias and the entire Ocean Rescue team. And for those of us that have been around for a little while, if you recall, it was extremely difficult to hire lifeguards in the past. And to get that news tonight that we are at one hundred percent plus really is going to take the pressure off that twenty-plus personnel team who were working those long, extremely frequent back-to-back shifts. So having a deeper bench in ocean rescue safety is something to really to be thankful for and applaud Chief and their team for that. We're also working through our task force. We do have a meeting scheduled for later this month as we're working on options and ideas for enhancements at both Fire Station One and Fire Station Two. To remind the community, we have been awarded a grant in the amount of three point one million dollars for Fire Stations Two. And at Fire Station Two, it would involve a potential for a complete tear down and a rebuild. There is a salary increase in the budget that was first presented in May at three percent and has been adjusted to four percent to better reflect the Southeast CPI per the board's recommendation. Additionally, the town budget now at this point is approximately fourteen point two million dollars across all funds. Our general fund is just shy of thirteen and a half million. Again, we'd like to reiterate that our tax rate will remain the same at fifteen and a half cents dedicated to general services and one cent of that property tax to beach nourishment. We are continuously ranked either number two or three. We flutter back and forth, but we are one of the lowest ranked, lowest tax rate, highest ranked communities in the twenty-one North Carolina Oceanfront municipalities. And we are one of the top communities ranked across the state when you combine our city tax with our local Carteret County tax. Our general fund property tax revenue is going to be north of five million dollars this year as anticipated and presented by Carteret County. Our average household in Emerald Isle is just shy of four hundred and six thousand dollars, which would generate a tax bill of approximately six hundred and sixty-nine dollars per year in all of our services, full-time police, fire, ocean rescue. Now, we currently have fifteen paramedics on staff out of twenty-six personnel members where a little over two years ago, we were at two paramedics. So the services that you saw over Memorial Day, all the numbers and stats shared. So we're able to maintain all of those services on average for six hundred and sixty-nine dollars per property per year. What's really important to us is the, is the visitors. Our guests will help us drive our sales tax revenue to nearly three million dollars a year. And that helps keep Emerald Isle's services extremely high, welcoming all guests and residents, but maintaining that extremely low tax rate. One thing that's most important to us is the beautification, enhancement and environmental protection of our beaches. And to do that, it takes a serious investment. In addition to the one cent of the sixteen and a half that is dedicated, we still have our special district tax rate, which is a four cent for oceanfront. And those two taxes combined together will generate approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That beach nourishment fund goes into a specified area, can only be used for activities involving nourishment along our section of bog banks. When you look at the budget perspective and comparing costs, that sixteen and a half cent tax rate is approximately fifty-six dollars per property per month in Emerald Isle, which, if you will, is more than likely less than the average monthly cable bill, phone bill, cup of coffee if you purchased one a day. We talk about dinner for two at a moderately priced restaurant or even movie for a family of four. And we hope that you can fill your tank of gas for fifty-six dollars, but chances are it may be a bit more than that. But what we want to point out is this is a community's budget. We want to reach and exceed the goals of our community and we're very thankful to be a part of this process. And so at that, I would ask the board, if you have any further detailed questions, either myself, Laura or staff, and we would be glad to answer them here tonight.
Thank you, Matt. All right, opening up the board for questions for Matt and/or Laura.
Me personally, I'm just amazed, looking back, been on the board now several years. Four years ago, maybe, maybe it's less than four, we were trying to find places to get lifeguards. We couldn't, they wouldn't come here because we didn't have a place for them to stay. And it was, and we were worried about how would we get the beach done and all that stuff. And to be overstuffed a little bit on lifeguards, that's, that's amazing. And the paramedics, to go from two to fifteen, we're an elderly group of citizens here. And having the most qualified person show up at your house when you need somebody is amazing. So having a paramedic over somebody in those first aid is pretty cool too. So hats off to the chiefs for figuring that out, making that come together. Because I know it's, it's got to be hard just looking back over the years. Commissioner Messer can speak up on that too and talk about how hard it was trying to find people. It was, it was quite a challenge, so great job and to keep the, keep it so low, I'm pleased with it. Thank you.
On that line, Commissioner, if you don't mind, we had a traveling, which we call is our senior advisor. We, there's eighteen senior advisors for town managers across the great state of North Carolina and our representative showed up today. And when I shared with him that we were at one hundred percent fully staffed, including the police department, it took him aback because right now across the state is on average around a twenty-five percent vacancy rate. And once the country, it's between twenty-two and twenty-five percent across the country. So we're so thankful, one, that we're an appealing place to live and work, that our culture is strong, our compensation is very competitive. So on behalf of all of our staff members, we thank you for that. But being able to say that we're at or near one hundred percent full employability is extremely important in today's market.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Zap?
Besides the beach music festival and the fireworks, where did we reduce costs from last year to this year?
So we had a pretty large delta and we worked internally on that. And I'll spin it over to Laura to allow her to address some of those larger ticket items. But what we have done in general is maintain low cost of equipment and vehicles. We have amateurized and seen surplus sales that are really strong. Again, we sold two more vehicles yesterday. And so what we're trying to do is find every opportunity, but she can speak to a couple of more.
Um, in the, in the quick summary, there is a couple of items that you can see there and particularly in the administrative office. We've talked extensively over the past year and a half, two years, and we went with part-time staffing in two positions. So that was a reduction that we did. And then also in the fire department, we were looking at with one person retiring, the fire department did look at keeping that position. And we talked through it in the budget and we elected to go ahead and present the budget with the lower headcount in the fire department. So those were two of the bigger ones that we did present in this budget.
And what with a ballpark?
So in the administration, we've got about seventy-six thousand roughly and then another seventy-eight thousand in the fire department.
Thank you.
In addition to that, Commissioner, it would be an observation and containment of overtime. So you can imagine the amount of work that it took to go from two paramedics to fifteen. So those thirteen people were putting in tremendous amount of training hours, class hours, and all of those hours were accounted for in the previous year and we've worked with Chief Mathias. We are going to be able to stabilize that going forward. We had a big leap to try to go from where we were to where we wanted to be. And so there will be cost control and overtime as well, looking forward in the next twelve months.
Matt, have we done any comparisons to see if contracting out certain services? Is there anything left we can contract out or vice versa, maybe bring it in-house that we can do? I know like Public Works rebuilt the walkways and they did a tremendous job saving money there. And I'll also, congratulations Laura on your award-winning finance thing. It's fantastic. We have such talented staff. But I was just wondering if we've done comparisons, you know, about contracting out versus doing things in-house and trying to find savings there.
Yes, sir. Great question. The answer to your question is yes. We're continuously in that process improvement. Currently today, our staff maintains one hundred percent of our mowing. We've looked at that in the past. It's actually more expensive. We're the most frugal environment. And then we can also control and provide a higher level of service. So specifically, what's important to us is we have a trash-free style environment and we maintain our grass and our mowing specific to corridors, whether it be NC fifty-eight. And I'd like to applaud Laura for that. We have a reimbursement program that comes with NC DOT. She looked at every single opportunity page we could turn. And over the last year, year and a half, we have looked at those maintenance agreements where we get reimbursement from NC DOT and that has been increased substantially. So maintaining it in-house is still a benefit, specifically in this building. And across the street at our building, we have reduced the amount of cleaning and maintenance. And so we're trying to do that in-house as well. We have one subcontracted maintenance person that comes in outside to help the police department on their twenty-four hour turns, seven days a week. So we have turned every one of those pages. We also work cohesively with Carteret County, so we had generated rent now with, in the last few years, we generate rent on our side by renting to the. by renting to the Carteret County Shoreline Protection Office. And in exchange, Carteret County has helped us through Quasharma to have our debris site on NC-58, where we used to pay around $60,000 to $65,000 a year to dispose of our yard debris. We virtually cut that in half with storage maintenance as well as using that $100,000 grant from FEMA to develop the site. Then we're also maintaining and chipping those materials, either recycling them in place or putting them back on the island. We've looked at options to resell those materials for profit to help drive down the cost of all of our collections. We've purchased vehicular protection. We've looked at how to run a VIP, which is your maintenance protection to put you on cycle, to drive down fuel costs. We've lowered idle time. So I really want to thank each and every department head because they have worked exhaustively to, when we have a penny to spend, we try to turn it into a nickel. And so we've done that. And for the existing and previous board members that are in the room, over the last eight years, we've been fortunate to receive $62.5 million in outside funding. We are currently managing projects north of $14 million today. And we want to applaud the community for that because the two fire trucks at $1 million that are being purchased, the two ambulances at $500,000, and that $3.1 million improvement that's coming to Fire Station 2 would all be our responsibility. And we would have to amateurize that in the form of debt over time. So what's important is that is paid for. And then we're avoiding, there's cost avoidance also bundled into this budget. And that's extremely powerful. I can't think of other communities that are as efficient as we are today. Not to say that they don't exist, but we know our circle a little bit better than others. In comparison, other communities, for example, Wrightsville Beach, the reason that their tax rate is lower than ours is they're collecting $6 million annually in parking fees, and we collect approximately $250,000. So if we were to take that $6 million and divide it by our tax rate, it would drive Emerald Isle's tax rate down to approximately four or five pennies versus the 16 cents. So when you're looking at who's doing what and how they're doing it, there's definitely, when you pull a lever or move a knob, it's going to have an intended and an unintended consequence. So those are some of the most recent things we've done to curb costs, increase service levels, and keep things moving.
And you mentioned about the debt for our capital improvements because the debt's going to continue to put pressure on our budget. And that's what's going to kind of say what our tax rate's going to be also. And with the uncertain economic times, this is what's really weighing heavily on me. And so I'm just wondering like how we're looking at, how closely we're looking at that and the impact of the capital improvements with debt over time. But that's going to be on the future budgets. And what are we doing to prepare for that?
So the biggest question is going to be, if the community continues to enhance and require additional emergency services, will we be able to survive at Fire Station 1? That's the multimillion-dollar question, no pun intended. What would you like to see in fire and emergency personnel services? Where would you like the station and/or stations to be located? Where can we procure property? How can we build the structure? So tomorrow, actually, is my fifth anniversary as town manager here. And five years ago, we had a conversation about Fire Station 1 and/or the new Fire Station Emergency Operations Center. At the time, that estimated cost was $6 million. Fast forward to 2024, that estimated cost is $12 million. So the question becomes, one, where can we build it? Can we afford it? And then question two is, how will you make a payment on that? And so what we have done actively over the last 36 months is to fees the cost of Fire Station 2. We've parked that $3.1 million in a grant. We've parked the $2 million of the fire trucks. We've parked the $1 million of the two ambulances. So we've cycled those things. You're asking a fantastic question. And it really is a community question of what do we want? What do we need? And how can we afford it? So it's a little bit complicated to answer your question, but we're here to help you with all the details and all the data. And so we know the numbers of calls that are being ran each year. We know how far that they're going. We know the average response time. We know the day and time of the year. We have our bell curve. We're tracking all the vehicles to Emerald Isle. For those that don't know, we have a pretty sophisticated camera system, the most sophisticated on the eastern side of the state. And at Coast Guard Road and NC-58, for example, 4,100 and approximately 68,000 cars came across and through that intersection in 2023. That was up from 2022, which was 4,108,000 vehicles. On a daily basis, 20% to 25% to 26% of those cars are going down Coast Guard. So nearly 1.2 million people are traveling down Coast Guard Road. With that kind of volume and change, you're going to come extremely important decisions for residential services, business services, and then guest services over time. So maybe this was a good segue, but I believe that Commissioner Brownlow has some very good ideas of how we're looking at revenue streams associated with rentals and tourist impact fees. And so we'll have to seriously dive into those over the next 12 months because it's fair and reasonable that if a service fee is generated by X party and it's not equitable to the whole community, would you want to bake that into a tax rate and not normally? So if I'm going to have a golf cart or if I'm going to drive the beach, it's fair and reasonable that those costs are associated with that service. That can theoretically be extended to tourism as well. But that's a question that we would have to work on as a group with your leadership as the board.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Zap?
So yeah, so looking at revenue streams, certainly, that's something we need to do. Have we looked at any other areas where we can make cuts? The hard point right there.
Absolutely. And I don't believe that you can because if you make a cut, you'll reduce a service and you prioritize what those services were. So we're running, what I would say to you very conservatively and considerately, we're extremely lean. In many of our departments, we're working pretty long hours. You'll notice that, I think the joke always was that you see a couple of cars at that building before 8:00, after 6:00, after 7:00, after 8:00 p.m., six and seven days a week. And they're, from the top to bottom, with the 74 full-time people and the 130-ish part-time people we have, I'm proud to stand here and say that I not only enjoy what I do, I love the people I work with, and they exemplify excellence on a daily basis. I don't see anywhere else we can cut. But if there's solutions and situations you would like to reduce, then we would have to have that conversation. But to do the job you want done today, I'll speak to my set of looking at every number. I don't think so. And I would ask Laura if she sees any areas of reduction and possibilities. If you maintain the same level, what could potentially be cut?
And I think this would be, you know, you were talking about some of these things like the level of services that we provide now. And it'd be good to engage the citizens on that to see if there's anything that they'd be willing to give up in anticipation of, you know, the real possibility of a future tax increase. And I mean, I applaud that we have one of the lowest tax rates in coastal Carolina. And I was even looking at, like in Horry County, South Carolina, they actually even give a tax credit to full-time residents to try to keep it affordable for the locals to live there. And because that's something else I'm hearing now is like, we're going to be, you know, phasing out our local citizens here. And so just want to watch out for that and stuff in the future. But so, yeah, there's still some more things that we need to look at on at least next year's budget. Work closely together on that and really dig in and see what we can do to make some changes there.
I would love to see a list of the cuts and reductions in service that y'all considered as part of this budget process that were not implemented, like staffing cuts or reducing the number of vehicles or any other changes that you considered but did not put forward to reduce the cost. I mean, revenue is oddly easier to find than cost reduction. And I think we have to do both of those things. And it seems like besides, and thank you, Laura, for pointing out those two things, but cost avoidance is not the same thing as cost reduction. So where are, you know, we need to be willing to look at and assess and at times make hard decisions. But we can't do that without having teed up or without having visibility into the actual departments and their missions and who, how much does it cost to do what to be able to make those kinds of choices. I mean, it's easy to sit back and say, we'd like to make sure nobody drowns and everybody gets a call immediately. And, you know, all the great things that we do. And we've been blessed to have a tremendous service level for a long time. But whether or not we're going to be able to afford to maintain that remains to be seen. So I would love to see, what are the things that y'all looked at reducing that we did not consider?
So I'm going to actually unpack that, if that's okay with you, and I'll look to the other board members. It would be almost impossible to answer Mr. Wooton's question based on the parameters that you set for us as goals. So if you would like to change the goals or refine the goals, then we can define what cuts are possible. So I hear his question, and unfortunately, I don't think we can answer it outside of, the fire department said that we needed one more full-time firefighter. And we told the fire department, we're going to have to figure out a way to make it work because we can't raise taxes. Then our team, we're utilizing part-time staff. And then we've already reduced, we have let, if you want to call names, Artie Dunn worked for us for 31, almost 32 years. He was our inspector that was coming back part-time. We made a reduction in the tree permits, which reduced the revenues. And I had to let Artie go the following Monday. So now, that's why Mr. Seberg is doing the inspections that he's doing. And I'm doing inspections on his off days and staying after hours to complete those. So it's a little bit hard to answer your question because the best way to answer you is if something needs to be done, the existing team members make it happen. And so if you would like to make any changes, like a reduction in fire, a reduction in police, we can give you the amount that that would result in. But I'm not sure I can answer his question. Can any of the other commissioners help me better understand how to help?
Well, no, that was the point of the hopeful, that was what I wanted to get out of having conversations with the department heads at the budget workshop that ended sooner than I would have thought. So it's hard to write down what are those questions. But when you have an interactive discussion, you can really kind of dive into the details. I don't know each of the department's missions as well as the department head. And that's why I was hoping to access their experience and get their advice and judgment. Maybe they need more money. I don't know.
I was just going to chime in some of the bigger ticket items that we did talk about. You know, I mentioned the three personnel, the beach music festival. I know, not popular. Sometimes I feel bad even bringing these up, but that was a cost savings. Fireworks was also a cost savings. And there was a piece of equipment that just popped into my mind that an ATV unit that the department has requested. And they said it's pretty much falling apart. And we were balancing the budget. And we said, we've got to figure something out where, you know, we're going to get by. So we did make some of those. And I apologize, I don't have that prepared in a presentation at the moment. But those are some of the bigger ticket items that come to mind.
Yep. No, I appreciate that.
Highlight that for you. And I think that is helpful for everybody.
Any other questions for Mr. Zap?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson to open the public hearing. All in favor? All right, public hearing is open. If you got to the sign-up sheet, great. If you didn't, we'll go by show of hands. I'll invite you up to the podium for three minutes on your thoughts or comments on the public hearing. Unlike general public comment, anything in your three minutes here should be geared toward the fiscal year '24, '25 budget.
Test, test, it's on.
Good evening.
Good evening. When I left home, I said to my husband, I'm going to keep my mouth shut. Well, that did not happen. I want to commend Matt Zap on his presentation. It wasn't easy doing his job to present a budget of this magnitude to you all. I just want to say, the very last thing that you need to cut would be your law enforcement, fire department EMS. I'm just here part-time. But if you look at the average age of the people here and who live here, we need EMS. The average age of the folks on the beach, they need your EMS and and lifeguards, yes, yes. They're just most important. And the fact that they are getting a raise, yeah, is excellent because those folks don't always, they're not always paid what they're worth and what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, before you step away, just for the record and the minutes, could I have your name and address, please? I'm sorry.
Patricia Leonard, 325 Cedar Street.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Anyone else for the public hearing portion? All right, don't see any other hands. Nobody signed up? All right, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Sawyer has the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? That motion is carried. Well, now, let's see, there's public hearing, open, closed. Next one would be a motion regarding the '24, '25 budget ordinance. I'll wait for a board. There are four motions that we have to. All right, agenda item 13, four motions.
Make a motion to adopt the fiscal year '24, '25 budget ordinance.
Command, Commissioner Sanderson with the motion to adopt the budget ordinance as presented. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we have 4-4 and Commissioner Wooton voting no. Motion is geared 4-1, I'm sorry, did I say 4-4? 4-1 with Commissioner Wooton being opposed. That motion is carried. Next one regarding the fiscal year '24, '25 fee schedule.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year '24, '25 fee schedule.
I'd like to make a comment. Does that include the beach driving fees? I think there's a, I want to make sure that we exclude disabled veterans from having to purchase beach driving permits, including even having to purchase the price of the decal. If that's, we can, if the board would support that. I can make a motion to that.
Okay, Council, it looks like we've got a potential request, an amendment to the fee schedule. Can you walk us through that? So we do it right?
Yes, sir. You can ask Commissioner Sawyer whether or not he wants to amend the amendment.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year '24, '25 fee schedule to exclude veterans for having to pay $10 for the sticker to jog on the beach. I'd like that to be free.
Specifically disabled.
Specifically for disabled veterans.
Yes, ma'am.
I just need some clarification here. We say disabled veterans. Those are also issued to handicapped individuals. And I believe it's in our best interest to not give unfair consideration to one group over the other when it comes to disabilities.
I concur. Like to amend your motion one more time or no, sir? It's up to you.
I'd like to ask now, what was the number on that fee schedule, Matt? As far as the disabled veterans and disabled? Giving that $10?
I think altogether, it was about $12,000. It was about $12,000, but that includes 65 and over, I think.
Yeah, so before you, you have an email that was sent on this morning at 11:57. And beach driving permits, approximately 611 handicap permits were issued last year out of the 3285. We were able to categorically identify
We were able to categorically identify that ninety-two of those individuals showed a disabled veteran placard or license plate. So we don't track it that way, but we were able to pull those counts manually for you. And so in general, what we shared with you on May twentieth was, out of all the beach driving permits, which were approximately three thousand two hundred and eighty-five, one thousand one hundred and fifty-six of those permits were free. And what the staff had proposed was to just have a fee for the processing, which is still free to, to get the permit. It's just ten dollars for the decal.
For the process.
Processing fee for the sticker. And so whichever changes that you make would ultimately impact a specific group. So if you want to include only disabled veterans, we categorically captured approximately ninety-two. All handicap would be six hundred and eleven.
I think we had sixty thousand left over when we made those fees. And after really thinking about it, I mean, I know we've got a lot of backlash for the disabled. I'd like to make an amendment to give those stickers out. No, no ten dollar charge. I think we've got the room to do that.
Disabled veterans and disabled.
Disabled in general. Disabled in general. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, a fee schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five. But I would like the handicap stickers not to have to pay the.
So to help to re- maybe a potentially easier way to say that is, if someone is a disabled veteran or has a disabled placard, that that person is charged as zero dollars. Is that an easier way to say that? Is that okay for police when we go to make the, does that make sense, Mike? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have another question.
Okay.
Of the free permits issued that leaves a balance of over five hundred that are issued to various people. Will the ten dollars still apply to those people? Employees, former elected officials, anyone age sixty-five and over?
Your motion was to exclude disabled veterans and.
Record now.
Your, your motion was to amend.
To keep it as, my motion as amended by Commissioner Sawyer.
Your motion, just to be clear, your motion was to adopt the fee schedule and to exclude the ten dollar fee for disabled veterans and people carrying a disabled placard. Is that correct? Okay, that motion is on the floor. All in favor of by Commissioner Sawyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
All right, so I just want to make sure the clerk is clear then in the minutes that disabled veterans and anyone with a disability placard by proof would pay still zero dollars. All other people would pay the ten and any other residents would pay the fifty. And non-Carteret County would be one twenty-five, or Carteret County would be one twenty-five, non-Carteret County would be two hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next one would be regarding the five-year capital replacement improvement program.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the five-year capital replacement improvement program.
Right, Commissioner Taylor has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed?
And I, I oppose.
Two opposed? So the motion is carried by a three-two vote unless I'm mistaken. Thank you.
I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five pay plan.
All right, motion is on the floor to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five pay plan by Commissioner Sanderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, was that a, was it a yes vote or a?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Unanimously carried. Thank you very much. All right, items number fourteen. Comments from the town clerk? Just like, just like your predecessor.
The board, by the way, glad to have you.
All right, no comment, council. Town manager, Mrs. Zap, any comments, sir?
Yes, sir. Actually, I have one clarification I need tonight and want to let the public know that a copy of the monthly town manager's report is available at the rear of the table. Some of those items included the release of the June twenty-twenty-four Emerald tidings. Want to tell you that our Christmas decoration and give you a brief update for the public, that over sixteen thousand dollars was raised. The town has matched sixteen thousand. So we have invested those dollars to put one, all new one-ten power outlets along the black decorative poles along NC fifty-eight and then leading down Islander Drive so that when we come back for the two thousand twenty-four Christmas holiday, there'll be new garland, new lighting and new bows. So that was a fifty percent donation. Thank you to the community and those that are raising those funds. Also wanted to let you know that there's a brand-new website tutorial if you want to learn how to click through and find information on our website. So we wanted to thank Mark and our media intern, Mr. Moore, who put that together. We shared with you tonight the planning department activities to show you all the changes and the work that's going on in staff. We also wanted to give a public update that the bathrooms are near fifty percent renovated at the community center and that we're working through that. We should be about another week or two out. Then we will go to the outside bathrooms and complete that rehabilitation. Want to say thank you to our tennis and pickleball players and congratulate them on the recently accomplished and updated tennis and pickleball court. So if you are either of those two places of playing, you can go out and check it out outside here tonight. It's tremendous. Also wanted to remind everyone that we have bid out. We're, we bid out an eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar beach access walkway project and it came in substantially overbid, so overpriced. So what we have done is our staff put together a materials list. We're bidding out materials where the town will be able to buy those materials, drive the costs down. And we have put out a release for bids for labor only for the removal and replacement of up to thirteen walkways, which again would not be tax dollars. That is a full grant that we wrote and we're administering through FEMA. So that would be opened as early as June twenty-fifth. If the bids come back favorable, we'll come back before this board on January, or July the ninth, asking for your concurrence to award bids. Construction would not begin until the fall period after plus or minus the ninth of September. And then construction would be anticipated to be complete by April. So we're going to go in the off-season and make those improvements. The one thing that I do need from the board tonight, I believe I did what you've asked me to do, but I want to be a hundred percent sure and transparent here, that we've had a request from a satellite merchant to set up and vend at the Western and Eastern Ocean Regional Access. And it has been policy for the last four years and three hundred and sixty-three, four days to not do that. And that our policy is that we don't compete with our businesses here in Emerald Isle by allowing satellite merchants at the public parking areas at the east and the west. I would like for the board to give me clear direction to either support that or if you want to change, we'd gladly change it. But that is a decision that I have understood in the past and want to just make sure that we're all still on the same page that the only time that we allow satellite merchants there is per your request for a special event. If we were having a concert series or a special satellite merchant event, but on a daily basis, it is not necessarily in our purview or my purview to allow someone to do that. So if the board wouldn't mind, I'd like your concurrence on that or redirection.
Okay. We, I hear your question that that is news to me, thankfully. I don't know anything about what's going on there, which is fine by me. The current ordinance does not allow satellite merchants at Eastern and Western Ocean Access, correct?
The ordinance permits us to allow people.
Okay.
But the town has to, for example, if you were a private party and we'll use Mr. Watson's corner by the shrimp stand. Mr. Watson and his team determines which vendors he would like to vend and when and how often and what he would charge them. So you've entrusted to my office to make the decision of whether or not to let an ice cream vendor, a burger vendor, a taco vendor at the east and the west, which is public property. And the decision from the board in the past has been no vending. That's our standard and policy. And I responded to the inquiry multiple times over the last forty-eight hours with that answer. But I would like your backing if that's what you want. So we do not allow them. We don't sell or rent spaces to vendors.
Do we need a motion for that or do we just get consensus from the board?
Got a question now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'd just like to share some background on that topic. Matt was correct in his timing of, since we have prohibited that during my tenure as Parks and Recreation Director, we did permit that for one year and it was a nightmare. We were criticized by other businesses, brick and mortar businesses here in our town, which is justifiable. Fenders would show up or not show up. And we were advertising who would be here, who would be there, when, which was unfair to our local businesses as well, in my opinion. Not only that, it became a burden on staff. It became a burden on your paid parking because you're, you're giving away inventory when you do that by the space that their trailer takes up, by the spaces that their employees take from you. And then your garbage cans are going to stay full from that, in most cases, from those vendors filling those cans up to overflowing. And that's, that's a history of when it did occur and I know all this firsthand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Matt, you don't need any backing. You don't need a motion.
I do. I do. I actually need a motion and this.
I make a motion that we prohibit satellite merchants in the, in all Emerald Isle public parks.
Could I amend that to say except for a special occasion if we decide?
Yes, I agree.
If you would have been.
I am in my motion to exclude special events which are given permission by the town manager and this board of commissioners.
All right, motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you.
I thank you for that because the example that we like to share with our community is the police department does a tremendous job at the car show in the fall. And our chief actually cooks and they sell sandwiches and one hundred percent of those proceeds go back to buying Christmas gifts for the kids and needy people in the community. So that makes logical sense. And so we just really certainly appreciate you giving us that clarification and we don't want any confusion going forward. So thank you. And that's, that's the conclusion of my report. Unless you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, comments from our commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I would like to first off, welcome Jennifer to our new seat over there and congratulate her on passing a, I heard a very, very hard human resources certificate that she passed. So glad to have you and thank you for accepting the position. So that's it. And thanks for all the citizens coming out tonight. That's really all I've got. Nice meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Wooton?
Sure. On the theme of saving money, I would like to make a motion for this board to evaluate a proposal and contract from another local law firm who is interested in representing the town as our town attorney at a substantially lower annual rate than, than what we're currently have, what we currently have budgeted. And I'm curious to see, and we'll get the proposal this week and share it with y'all. But I would like to get a motion to get that proposal, ship it out to the commissioners this week and then make a decision by our next July meeting.
Okay, so I mean, if I'm understanding you clearly, you're proposing a motion to request proposals for alternative legal representation?
Well, we don't want in particular, yeah.
Okay, all right. So the motion on the floor is to request proposals for, yes.
I have a question. And this is for legal and the manager.
Oh, excuse me.
Does that require any solicitation or is that as simple as the board seeking an alternate provider?
Should be typically done through a request for proposals to allow the opportunity for more than one law firm to apply. But that's certainly at the board's discretion to allow.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the legal counsel serves at the pleasure of the board.
But this is your, your request is make sure I understand everybody is a review
Yep.
of, of funding and other options out there is what we're, what we're looking at right now.
Yep.
The request is to solicit and review proposals for alternative, alternatives, alternatives to legal counsel. Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion's carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The only other thing I had to say was about the, the budget process and thank you, Laura. You're amazing. It's always easy to get up to speed and understanding. Some of the terminology is different. I've been doing financial planning, budgeting for more than twenty-five years. Everything from small community organizations to large not-for-profits and billion-dollar corporations. I thought I had a good track on the process here till we got to the public budget workshop on the twentieth. And I was not fully tracking the requirement that the town manager implemented on us, that we had to submit questions in writing in advance. I'd never heard such a thing. In fact, I reached out to seven different elected officials in nearby municipalities and none of them ever heard such a thing either. So it seemed like it was very limiting and the reason I voted to not adopt the budget was because I felt like I was precluded from doing the due diligence and the, the responsibility of asking the right questions, engaging with the department heads. I tried asking a couple of questions of the town manager and as you saw tonight, he can talk about what, you know, throw numbers at you all day long. But I want to hear from the guys that are closest to the mission and that are ultimately responsible for delivering. So I think over the last couple of years, and this gets to the point of cutting costs versus finding new sources of revenue. You know, last year, technically we were supposed to get a penny back, maybe not. Lloyd left, but he didn't vote for it. I know that. But we were supposed to get a penny back, maybe not. This year, we say we're not increasing the tax rate, yet we are raising fees by a number of dollars greater than a penny worth of tax rate. In this budget, the prognosis, the future prognosis section talks about, oh, it's going to be, you know, a need for additional revenue. But there's really not anything about cutting costs or if building efficiencies, finding efficiencies. And I hear that we do it all the time, every day. But it would be nice, as the folks that are responsible for this oversight, to know exactly what those things are and to quantify them. Now I know in the January thing, there are going to be a whole lot more questions and white papers and all the rest of it. Not knowing what we walked into this past year, shame on me. Now I know next year I will, I will come very prepared. The other thing in, in the budget that I didn't understand is every department has goals that are set. And they seem like there might be interpreted from somewhere. I don't know who reviews or approves those goals for each department. Many of them seem fine and intuitive. Some of them didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And I'm just curious, and again, we're going to have to fix this as we go through the process for next year. And maybe it does need fixed. Maybe I just need to learn, but it is not intuitive to me. I felt like we were following the published process right till we got to that point and the wheels came off and I lost insight and frankly, a little bit of faith in the process that things were working out the way that they were supposed to. And I'm not going to endorse a budget that I haven't had what I believe is the proper amount of insight into, to understand and, and fully endorse it. So that's the reason I didn't vote to adopt it. Again, I can't say enough for Laura and the amazing job that she does and she can explain things really well, even to me. So that's greatly appreciated, but we just need to be a lot more, I need to be a lot more engaged and interactive in the budget process, starting not in January, but before then. And I think we should adopt things like monthly reporting on how many vehicles are they? What department are they assigned to and who's driving it? How many miles? I think we already tracked that already. We have the software that does that, I think. Diving into that, it's a recurring burr in the saddle of the people of this town. And just saying, oh, we have the right number of vehicles or don't worry, we lease them is not an acceptable answer. It seems like we have more vehicles than we need. I parked down by the rec center and I had to drive around once because there were too many F-150s and Chevys with Emerald Isle logos on them. Understand that's where we park them at night, but do we need that many? I don't know. What about the two-door Jeep that's parked now over at the admin building? Used to be down at the rec center. Why do we need a two-door Jeep in this town? Maybe there's a great reason. I just don't know what it is. So all those things, I say all that to say I was, I was tracking. I thought we were on a great path. And then I was very sorely disappointed that the demand for written questions came up. And frankly, that my colleagues conceded and said, yeah, sure, you have to have that so you can. And then dismissed the department heads when everybody was in the same room and we could have had a conversation. That was a little bit frustrating for me, but like I said, I'm, I'm not very bright, but I do learn and now I know. And going into next year, I will be very prepared. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brownlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I, I extend my sincere gratitude to the town staff for the work they do to prepare a budget, to run a town, keep us safe and secure and promote our tourism and keep our businesses flourishing. It's a tremendous job. It, it's overwhelming. And, and I've worked in local government. I was assistant county manager at one time. I have been, I worked with state and I've had to do budgets. And I've been a town planner. You, you name it. I probably have done it in local and state and county government. And it is overwhelming. And then to be on this side of it is, it just makes it even more complex. I had just as many people emailing me to turn down the budget as I did telling me to approve the budget. And it's kind of like a, a baseball umpire, you know, no matter what call you make, you know, half the week you're going to be cheering and half the week you're going to be cussing you. I've seen budgets that I did not like before, where I was, where I was not a commissioner, but looking outside and that were approved and seems like the town survived. And I've seen it likewise, I've seen budgets approved and everything went just fine too that I, that I liked. And so it's gone both ways. You know, and I'm, when I'm making my call, it's just, I'm doing it as the, the way I see best for the, for the people of this town and for this town thinking ahead in the future and not just for the next thirty days. And so that's why on the capital improvements thing, I improvements thing, I was just thinking, have we, uh, I wasn't, I haven't been involved with all that process, so, and maybe that's my, my ignorance of not knowing fully what's going on with the capital improvement plan, um, and, and maybe that's, I need to do more homework on it, um, but I, I would like to look at more at long-term planning and, uh, in innovative res- revenue streams that we're gonna be funding that with, rather than putting the burden on the taxpayer. The mo- the more we can take off the taxpayers, the, the better, and, and we're, we're in a unique situation, being a resort community, we have an opportunity to do just that, and, and I hope that, uh, I'm gonna be crafting something up here soon, and I'm hoping that I can garner support for this, and, uh, I'd like to get citizen input on it, as, as well as input from the staff, town staff, the board of commissioners, um, but it, it's coming up in the near future, and, and what I call smart growth strategies, um, where we can have a good, sustainable community without over, putting the overwhelming burden on the taxpayers. But otherwise, uh, uh, here we go to another season, we're only six months in, that's, that's a new board here, and, um, I've got a lot to learn, and, and I, I don't think I'll ever stop learning, but like Jay said, uh, Commissioner Wooton said that, that's, this is a learning process, the learning curve is steep and fast, this happened fast, I mean, my head's still spinning by how fast all this occurs, and so, uh, now that I've got a whole year to look at a budget, to work with a budget that I've been involved with, um, I'll be really digging on it more next year, and I appreciate everybody's support, and, and stay involved with the town, engage, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sawyer?
Staff, great job as always, Laura, congratulations on your award, Jennifer, welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations, Laura, extremely proud of you again, and incredibly appreciative that, uh, you're part of our team. Jen, welcome, congratulations to the staff, I appreciate the work that you do, and that is across the board, from management and administration to every department on every level, including those who, who are part-time. We have many part-time people that folks don't think about often, but those, those part-time folks are essential to the operation of this town. I applaud all of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Then, come on out for conversations and meet us, uh, talk to us informally, when is that, it's gonna be at Village Market?
August fifth.
August fifth, informal setting, come on out and just chat with us, we had a good time at the last one.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have a great night.